I'd like to call the August 1st Common Council Meeting to order. It is approximately 6:02 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Kinesje.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deputy Treasurer Noel.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Kinesje.
Present.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Petition and comments of citizens, like to remind everybody in the public, we allow for up to three minutes of your comments, nothing derogatory or personal, and this is not a question and answer, but we do welcome your statements, we do have a few here, and I'll begin with Michael Rosenbaum. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Rosenbaum, I live at 1515 Indiana Avenue, a proud resident of the city of La Porte. I have two things, one of the things I didn't put on there, which has to be acknowledged, was this past weekend was an incredible event, and I know that it goes way beyond the people that are in this room, it goes to your staff, it goes to the park and rec, it goes to your police officers, it just continues down the lines. So hats off to everybody for that wonderful event, that's the first thing. The real reason why I came is, two months ago, you had a plan, a road plan that you discussed with everybody, and I had made a request, and at the same time, you had already put it in there. In a road over by our, in the city of La Porte, we have an EMS station, the county, so I'm speaking a little bit as myself and as the county councilman. I told you that we have this issue about getting ambulances, it actually got worse since I've seen you back then, but the road is now so improved that at least we know getting in and out of EMS station, where it's safe for the vehicles and it's going to be smooth for the vehicles to get in and out and around that area. So I wanted to express my thanks to you for taking that serious concern that we had and taking action upon it, and now that it has been painted, the lines are there, it even looks even better. My only comment is, there's a little bit of confusion what to do with the circle now that the centerpiece is out, so I don't know if we just need to put a sign or something there, but either way, it was very important, ambulances that we were supposed to get this year, two of them, one may come in this year, one's going to come in next year, and then we're already trying to place orders for 24 and 25, so it is that ridiculous on getting these things. So that's why, when I spoke a couple of months ago, how important it is, I really appreciate you taking that seriously as well. So thank you, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilman. So we do have some individuals that will be speaking on the airport, just know that that is part of our discussion this evening, and if you ask questions now, those questions will be answered during, most likely be answered during the conversation there. So Kalen Deckard.
Good evening, Kalen Deckard, Cipio Township Trustee, 1482 West 500 South. Just wanted to come up to the podium tonight, introduce myself to some of you, some of you I know, some of you I don't know, but my concerns are the airport and being in the township of Cipio, the land that is going to, you guys are looking at annexing with that runway, I'm going to let the other ones give their presentation tonight, maybe get some answers of questions I may have, and then reach out a couple to you guys to get some more answers. But I just wanted to step up here, introduce myself, and just listen to the conversation tonight, so thank you.
Are there any certain questions you'd like answered, so they know when they come up?
Um, not particularly right at the moment. One question I guess I would have, as I heard that, you know, the reason why we're extending that is because of commercial jets coming in for business is here, I want to know how many businesses have maybe bypassed La Porte because of that runway only being at 5,000 currently, so.
Thank you. Porter Douglas.
I was going to wait until everything's done, and then I might have some questions.
I think you can do that during, during.
Okay, we'll allow that then. Sierra Sue Jess.
Okay, my name is Sierra Sue Jess, and I live on Jefferson Avenue, nothing to do with the airport, but I'm talking about the downtown area. We need more benches in the downtown. Recently, I was walking on Lincoln Way, my shoe came untied, and I could not find a place to sit down the tide. I balanced myself on the edge of one of the planters to tie my shoe, and at my age, that's a little dangerous. The other is, we have trees in the downtown area on the, you know, backstreets like Jefferson and Tipton that have not been trimmed back. There's one at 212, or no, excuse me, 512 Jefferson Avenue, every year that thing, the limbs drop down below five feet, so you have to duck.
We have a problem.
To, you know, get underneath. I walked Tipton Street the other night to get to the fireworks, and had to duck around trees on Tipton Street. So, you know, if we're going to have these trees, either they need to be growing so that they don't come over the sidewalk, or they're trimmed in the spring of the year so people can walk around downtown and on the backstreets too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And Sue, if I could recommend calling Jeff Batchelor as part of the street department, we finally have people that are willing to work, and we've actually hired some as a part of the tree crew, and so we're excited to say they'll be out. I mean, for years, they've been ignored, so we were up to at least 85 trees or more that need to be addressed right off the bat, so.
If you do, I just would put a bug in Mike's ear, because I know him personally, and he would take care of it, but.
Please do. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Standing Committee reports. Council President Frankie.
The Sustainability Commission met on Monday, July 25th. Liam Bules, the intern from the prestigious Indiana University, gave his presentation on the facts that were uncovered from the survey that he, well, the commission released a month or two ago, and most of the feedback was positive, and there were also some good points in there that the commission formed into part of a plan, and Liam put together a nice plan, working along with, again, the prestigious Indiana University Environmental Resilience Institute, and I think it's a pretty good plan that the commission can move forward with, and there are some attainable goals in there. The Redevelopment Commission met on Wednesday, the 27th, and Nick Minnick spoke on some progress updates, and it sounds like the main focus for this year is going to be finishing that Clear Lake Loop Trail and putting off the parking study and Monroe Streetscape design until the spring of next year, there's just too much going on to get it all done with the rest of the season. And lastly, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee met on Thursday, the 28th, some more flag discussion and discussion around upcoming events such as the Sunflower Festival and what the committee can do on that.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on Wednesday, July 20th. Approval was given for the placement of one more outdoor musical instrument that was funded by the Visual Arts Council. The lily pad cymbals will be placed at the Craven Pond Trailhead. The tour to La Porte will be taking place August 26th through the 28th. The Board will allow parking off the roadways for the event. The annual La Porte County Blues Festival will be held Saturday, August 13th, at Fox Park Amphitheater. Permission was granted for later park hours and off-road parking as well. Pam Schreiber and Mark Schreiber and Pam Carroll will be attending the Indiana Park and Recreation Association Conference, being held November 15th through November 17th. The roof reconstruction is happening currently at the Civic and should be completed by the end of this month. And then Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, August 2nd, 5:00 PM at the police station.
From the Purdue University, Councilman Paul Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Roger Galloway.
Next Monday, August the 8th, will be the Mayor's Veterans Committee meeting, 5:00 at the Park Department. Next Tuesday, August the 9th, will be the Police Merritt Commission, 2:00 at the Police Department. And this Saturday, August the 6th, the VFW Rib Cook-Off, we sell ribs in 12 to 3, and it's our 85th anniversary, we'll probably have the anniversary, I guess you could call a party, whatever kickoff about 4:00, and we've got to ban.
Councilwoman Cutler.
In July, both the Bid Board and the UEA approved funds for updating more of the Christmas decorations for downtown. The UEA approved it online since they did not meet. This Monday, the 8th, is the Business Improvement District Board meeting, and I would encourage Sierra to attend, but I will bring up the information about the lack of benches, and the UEA will be meeting in August on the 17th. That's it.
Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merritt Commission will meet this Wednesday, August 3rd, at 6:30.
Councilwoman Kinesje.
The City of La Porte Historic Preservation Commission will meet on Tuesday, August 16th, at 5:30 here in Council Chambers, and the Airport Authority. The La Porte Municipal Airport will be hosting the airfare this weekend, August 6th through the 7th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day. Rides will be available to purchase for both the PT 26A and the C45. Also featured at the airfare will be aviation career booths and antique car display, the La Porte County Mobile Classroom, craft vendors, food trucks, Kona Ice, and much, much more. They will also be hosting a pancake breakfast on Sunday morning from 7:00 AM until noon. 97.6 The Eagle and The Rock 106.5 will be broadcasting live as well. The Airport Authority's next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 10th, at 5:15 at the
Councilwoman Kinesje, introduction of first reading of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for its first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman Kinesje.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of La Porte, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of La Porte, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Cipio Township contiguous here within. Name of the petition, La Porte Municipal Airport Authority. Common address, vacant parcel of real estate located within close proximity of the La Port Municipal Airport. Statement of purpose and intent, a petition of voluntary annexation and for the zoning of a total of 46 plus or minus acres located in Cipio Township, La Porte County, has been filed by the sole owner of the land and the territory sought to be annexed and zoned. It is the intent and purpose of the ordinance to annex this territory to the City of La Port, Indiana, and establish a zoning district for this territory. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of La Porte, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the following describe parcels of real estate situated in La Porte County, Indiana, being contiguous by more than one-eighth of its aggregate external boundaries with the present boundaries of the City of La Porte, Indiana, shall be and hereby are annexed to and brought within the City of La Porte. A portion of land situated in the northwest corner of Section 23, Township 36 North, Range 3 West, Cipio Township, La Porte County, Indiana, and also being a portion of a 92.72 acre parcel, as recorded as instrument number 2009R-05898, situated in the northwest corner of Section 23, Township 36 North, Range 3 West, Cipio Township, La Porte County, Indiana, and being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at a cast iron monument marking the north quarter corner of Section 23, Township 36 North, Range 3 West, Cipio Township, La Porte County, Indiana, thence south 88 degrees, 2 feet 45 inches, west along the north side, north line, excuse me, of said 23, of Section 23, a distance of 1,198.67 feet for the point of beginning, thence south 1 degree, 29 feet 7 inches east, a distance of 1,489.09 feet to the north line of a 53.332 acre parcel known as Lure Park, and recorded as instrument number 2018R-12877. Thence, south 88 degrees, 27 feet 26 inches, west along the north line of said Lure Park, a distance of 1,516.19 feet to the east of the right of way of State Road 39. Thence, north 3 degrees, 11 feet 16 inches, east along the east right of way line, a distance of 1,484.12 feet. Thence, north of 88 degrees, 2 feet 45 inches, east along the south line of the La Porte Municipal Airport, a distance of 1,395.62 feet to the point of beginning, containing 49.6 acres. Section 2, that the boundaries of the City of La Porte, Indiana, shall be and are hereby declared to be extended so as to include the real estate of the above described parcels as a part of the City of La Porte, Indiana. Section 3, ordinance number 13-2017, as amended, which ordinance is commonly known as the zoning ordinance of the City of La Porte, Indiana, be and the same hereby in amended in order that the zoning classification of the herein described real estate, with the exception of all adjacent right of ways in the City of La Porte, La Porte County, State of Indiana, be, and the same is hereby established as AP Airport, provided however, that the required established and state procedures for review of such zoning classification by the Area Plan Commission has been fully satisfied. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full of force and effect 30 days from and after its passage by the Common Council, approval by the mayor, and legal publication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So before we move to the public hearing, I'm going to ask Ed Volk to come forward and speak to basically what this ordinance does from the airport's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for the record, my name is Ed Volk, and I'm the president of the Airport Board. From the airport's perspective, this is a rather simple procedure. The airport owns the parcel of land, which is 49.6 acres, and I note in the statement of purpose.
Could, Ed, could you speak up or move the mic closer, I think people in the back.
Surely. Does that catch?
How's that mic?
If you could speak up even a little more, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll try that. I note in the statement of purpose that the total acreage is referred to as 46 acres in, later in the ordinance, it's the 49.6, and that's correct, and that can be corrected with an amendment later on, but I did want to call attention. But the reason we're here today is that the airport owns that parcel already. This is a city airport, established by the city. It makes sense for the city to have within its confines all the property owned by its departments and agencies, which is the airport. So that's the simple reason as to why we're here tonight. Now, I could address the questions of, well, why did we buy the land in the first place? If you want me to do that, I'd be happy to do so. I've had a nice conversation with Kalen Deckard, a nice conversation with Jeremy Sobeki of the Park Department, and we've talked about the impact that this acquisition and this zoning ordinance would make. To answer the question is, why do we need to go beyond 5,000 feet? I have to tell you that years ago, when we got to 5,000 feet, I thought that would be the last time I would ever have to deal with an extension of the runway, but I outlived that need apparently, and so the fact is, and even before COVID, but as a result of COVID, we've just had a lot of demand for longer runway. It's not unusual for the aircraft that come in today to tell us that they're unable to buy fuel, because if they do, they'll be overloaded and will not be able to leave the airport in a safe manner. So the demand is there, we know that, and it's for safety purposes that we have these, this property. It's not to have this property to put any concrete runways or taxiways, this is for a safety, runway safety area. We don't want to have a situation where an aircraft, particularly in the winter, it might happen, runs off the end of the runway and crashes into something when we could have a nice, safe area with no towers, no anything out there but grass. So that's what we're trying to accomplish, is purely for purposes of safety as far as this parcel is concerned.
And the airport, just to reconfirm, the airport currently owns this property.
We acquired this property last spring, that's correct, I was correct. It was in a trust that was administered by JP Morgan Chase, and they own a parcel of about 95 acres across the south end of our property, and we bought this property, which is on the west end. This property abuts what the airport on the north, 39 on the south, Lure Park, or 39 on the west, Lure Park on the south, and then JP Morgan Trust owns the remainder.
Questions for Mr. Volk. I would ask.
Real quick, so, Mr. Volk, then, all of the remaining parcels that are in the city are already zoned AP, correct?
Yeah, we did that a couple of years ago. We tried for a while, we acquired quite a bit of property in kind of a piecemeal fashion, and we didn't get them all in at once, and I think the last time we did this, we had like eight or 10 parcels, some of them pretty small, but everything else that the airport owns is within the city limits of La Porte, and the goal is to put everything, including this parcel, in the city limits.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if you'll stick around to the end of the public hearing, so if the public could come up and ask questions. Mr. Nelson, is there anything you'd like to add?
I got the boring task of dealing with the legal issues.
If you could state your name and address.
Yes, Bill Nelson, I am a legal counsel for the airport. A couple of legal issues, this is the public hearing of this annexation petition required by statute. That statute requires as well that tonight's hearing be published, and I want to read into the record that we have affidavit of publication indicating that on July 7th, 2002, that this, the notice of this hearing was published in the La Porte, what's it called, the?
Earl Dispatch.
Yes, in that paper, so we have proof of publication, and I would ask the record to reflect that. Also, the statute requires that certain landowners in certain proximities of the petitioned land be actually given individual notice. There were eight of those on this particular petition. I am holding in my hand seven of the green card certified mail from those, return receipt requested, signed by those property owners. The one that we do not have a green card back on, it came back as unclaimed, not unable to deliver. Unclaimed, it satisfies the statutory provision that notice was provided. So we have the legal notice requirements met for tonight, and I think it's important the record to reflect that, because this is a public hearing. So that's the boring part of it. The only thing I would add, Mr. Volk is absolutely correct, historically, this is what the airport has done, even predating my representation, when parcels were purchased, there were various petitions dating back many, many years to annex in the property and rezone it to AP for airport, the most recent of which was, as Mr. Volk said, it was 2018, there were 10 parcels, we had purchased a few recently prior to that, and then in the process of getting the annexation petition ready, learned that there had been a few more purchased in recent years that had not been brought in. So again, complying with the historical process of wanting the La Porte Municipal Airport to be owned by, or to be held within the city limits, that petition was done, it was just like this process, the petition for annexation, for rezoning, the hearing, the readings, and then finally the vote, and that went through in 2008, late 2018. So we're just fulfilling what has been traditionally done as far as how the airport owns its property.
Thank you.
Mr. Volk knows far more about the airport than I do, and it's always fun to listen to him talk, so I'm going to turn it back over to him.
Questions from the council? Mr. Volk, I'll ask you to just sit tight for a little bit, and I will be opening up for a public hearing for the public to speak. Reminder, three minutes maximum, no personal attacks, and if you have a question, we'll put together all the questions, and then Mr. Volk can come up at the end and answer all those, but if you have a statement, please come forward as well. And first, I'll begin to those that signed up, Porter Douglas. And again, state your name and address for the record.
Porter Douglas, 2201 Mustang Drive in La Porte. Yeah, I'd like to know, I guess they bought this property to put a new runway in, or is it just to extend the one that's going north and south?
We'll go to the rec.
We'll let Mr. Volk answer that.
And my understanding is, at the south end of the present runway, there's going to be a runway going southeast and northwest sort of, that's my understanding. And these extra jets that are going to be landing, are they only going to be landing on that new runway, or are they going to be landing on the existing one? Because the existing one, they go right over my house, that means maybe a lot more planes are going to be coming right over my house, if they use the existing one. And if they, if they put a new runway in southeast, or southeast, are they going to have to close off I Street? And is that runway going to go beyond I Street, east of I Street?
We won't close I Street, that answer I can give you personally, so.
Okay, that's about it.
Thank you, Porter. Anybody else from the public would like to speak with a question or statement?
Why don't you bring Ed back up?
Mike?
Yes.
And again, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Essling, 1076 South Fieldstone Drive, La Porte. I appreciated the legal description, it didn't mean a lot to me. I assume there might be a sketch out there somewhere that shows this piece of property, or would that be available?
Yes, I could show it to you right now or after the meeting, it's on the south side of the airport, it's farmland.
And is it, for the most part, west of I Street, quite a ways west of I Street?
Yes, it doesn't touch, it doesn't touch.
So the Smith Farm, the draft horses, that all stays or not? Larry Smith, I think, is the guy's name.
Yeah, I don't know which one is his, but this was not that.
It's the only house on the west side of I Street, south of 250, he's got several red barns.
Yeah, that's not his parcel, no, correct. This is a parcel that touches 39 and the south end of the airport in Lure Park.
So it's mostly west of that area?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak or ask a question?
Got one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Douglas, please come forward for the record.
The lady earlier, the lady earlier spoke about trees uptown. I have a question, they cut down some trees, city trees, by my, right on my property, right next to my house, and do they remove the stumps, or they just leave them there?
Oh, this is regarding the airport, but I can talk to you after, about removing the stumps.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Kalen?
Okay, so just a few other questions. Whenever it comes down, and with Mr. Volk and Attorney Nelson, I would like to see a map of what the ideas are for that runway, if I could get a copy of the ordinance of that, and he talked about fuel, so are we looking at revenue dollar-wise for fuel costs? And if there's any way that I can get the eight taxpayer names that you sent your letter to for this? Another question I have would be, the land that you just purchased from the bank of JP Morgan, they own adjacent parcel next to it to the east of 39.54 acres, are we also going to try to obtain that parcel as well? Again, what Porter said regarding the runway, you said we're not closing I Street, or what would be 150 West, I know that was talks years ago, you know, I don't want to say that's probably ever been taken off the table, but I am concerned about my volunteer fire department, so.
I can say I- I can say I Street within the city won't be closed.
But I'm concerned of my fire station.
Sure.
We don't have control outside of the city, though, but yeah, that-
Right, but for my gentlemen and women on my department, for them to get to a call that is on thirty-nine, the only way they can take is south to four hundred and around, or come all the way through town and take Eighteenth Street. Now, I can tell you, we've had a bad accident not that long ago, and a lady passed away that was right there on thirty-nine. You know, Sunnyside is a concern on getting there. I know I was involved in an accident at Eighteenth and Thirty-Nine several years ago. You know, both departments, CPO and LaPorte City, did respond to that accident, and I'm very thankful for all that, but I start to look at response time for my guys. Where are they going to go? If we close off that road, are we going to have to go all the way down to A Street to get over onto Eighteenth to get to Thirty-Nine? Or, I'm just looking out for my guys.
And has somebody said they're going to close one fifty?
Years ago, there was mention of closing that road to put more hangers on.
Okay, and your other question regarding fuel, I'm not sure that I got it.
So I guess, is it money? Is it, do we charge when planes come in for fuel, like when they take ours?
Correct.
Okay, so are we looking at these jets, because then they're going to be using more fuel, so then we can get more money? So I guess, and those are questions that I'm going to speak with them regarding, and I know I've spoken to you on the phone, and setting up times to meet and get more in depth on some of these other questions, but again, you know, just coming up here and just starting to put my two cents in, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the public? Please, and again, state your name and address.
Adam Fulmer, 1007 West Twenty-Second Street. I think my only question is, with a bigger runway, what type of plane can land at the airport now? Is it a bigger plane? That's just basically my question.
Currently.
With an extended runway of a thousand feet.
Thank you. With that, any other public comments? Ed, if you don't mind, you and Mr. Nelson, or just you, if you'd like to answer each of those, and if we haven't answered your question at the end, please raise your hand, we'll make sure we get that answered.
Yeah, I may not have notes on all of them, but let's start with the last question first, of what types of planes will be here. From the point of most of us on the ground, you won't be able to tell the difference between what's coming in now and what will be coming in the future that can take a little more fuel and has a little longer range, but, and interestingly, the manufacturers get better and better with the aircraft that they're designing, and they're getting quieter, so we kind of want to encourage those type of aircraft to come in. Kaylin talked about the fire department. We're happy to host her fire department on our airport. The CPO Township Fire Department is actually a tenant of the LaPorte Municipal Airport, and we want them to succeed. Kaylin is absolutely correct when she says that years ago, there was some thought of extending that runway, the existing runway, across highway, across one fifty or I Street, and making a detour around it. That is off the table, I can tell you that. So that, so we don't need to worry about that. The, and the map, I'll be happy to meet with anyone out at the airport and really show you in detail exactly what we have as far as a map, how this lines up, but the question is, the relationship, I think Mr. Douglas raised, the relationship to I Street and this parcel, is there's about fifteen hundred feet west of I Street before the boundary, the eastern boundary of this property begins, so it's quite a ways away. Fuel, yeah, what's one of the things we do at the airports, we sell fuel, so we like to have those big jets come in and fill up with six hundred, nine hundred gallons of fuel. That helps to reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers of the city of LaPorte. Someone mentioned Larry Smith, that is just Larry's property just is not involved in this at all. That whole, that remaining thirty-nine acres that's owned by J.P. Morgan Trust pretty much surrounds Larry Smith's property, so this is not, it's not a problem. What was I Street? Oh, there was a question about a new runway going southeast, northwest, I think.
Correct.
This is the first I've ever heard of it. It's not on the plans, it's not being discussed. The, actually, the existing crosswind runway runs northwest and southeast, so that may be what the confusion is about. That's not an issue in, certainly connects with this annexation, nor is it an issue in connection with future development plans.
With the, with the main runway, that would be realigned, though, if it went to six thousand?
Yes, yes, and it would be realigned in basically a north-south orientation. And that's the, been the purpose of acquiring this land that we acquired over the years to allow us to do that on airport property and not have to acquire more property on either side of the roads.
The larger planes, I think the question was, those don't land on the site, what you'd call the smaller runway, correct?
No, 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 they would not.
Anybody else, if you raise your hand, if you have not had your question answered? Mr. Volk, if you don't mind sitting just at the front seat. Mr. Douglas, come forward.
So I'm to understand that, now I get that you're going to put a north-south runway in, you're not going to use the existing one to land the new jets?
Well, that is a plan-
Ed, if you could come to the mic and-
Right now, that's under consideration. I would love to tell you, the category answer to that question is yes, but we're still waiting for the FAA to say that that's a proper plan. They've got a lot of money, if this gets done, it's going to be a big project, and a large percentage of that, those funds will come from the FAA. So the answer is, I don't know, but that's what I'm trying to achieve, you know?
Well, now, this, this, were you originally planning on extending the original runway that's there now, south?
No, that would take it out over Highway thirty-nine.
That's what I thought, you haven't got any room there.
No, you're exactly right.
So you have to change the diagonal, so it's north and south.
You could be an engineer.
Well, I just wanted to get it clear in my head what you're talking about.
No, you're exactly right, exactly right.
So that's what we're, I'm not against that, but now, are you going to change the fuel depot there? When you get more jets coming in, are they all going to fuel up where the existing fuel tanks are now?
Well, most of those jets are fueled by fuel trucks. The fuel truck goes over to the fuel depot, pumps in fifteen hundred gallons of jet fuel in the truck, and then the, those airplanes don't like to move, they, once they're set, they want to be catered to, and so we bring the fuel to them. That would not change, but, just for purposes, something's going to have to be done with those fuel tanks, those existing fuel tanks. They're all over thirty years old, we've got underground tanks, Department of Environmental Management, Indiana, the EPA, they're all pushing us to get something done. That's kind of expensive, too, and we'll get it done, but, you know, it's on the plans.
Well, I was, I was thinking, because if they have to come to the pumps to fuel up, that's a lot, a lot-
They don't do that.
Good.
They don't do that.
That'd be noise by the neighborhoods there, too.
No, they never would. If we change this runway so it's mostly north and south, your house is going to be not under the runway anymore.
Ed, your house will be more impacted than Mr. Douglas's. Any, thank you. Any other questions, want to make sure?
I think I got them all.
Thank you. Anybody else that raised a question, want to make sure we're answered?
I just had one comment for Mr. Volk, because I think I talked about this with Mr. Nelson. Whether this, the realignment happens or not, the airport wanted this property to make the landing safer, correct?
Well, that's absolutely correct, a good point. Two reasons for buying this property. Number one, with the way the runway is now, you want the, particularly the eastern part of that, or the western part of that property, to be available as a runway safety area, so if someone runs off the runway, they're going to be relatively safe there. Second part, if we do do that pivot, that happens, well, then the eastern part of that property serves the same purpose. Again, we're not talking about putting concrete out there, no runways, no new taxiways, but it's a, it's a safety area. And of course, it prevents us from worrying about someone deciding to put up a tower right near the end of the runway. We control that. The FAA really encourages airports to control the property, immediately surrounding it, so you don't have these tower problems that we've seen in the past.
Thank you, Ed. Any other public comment? I will now close, public comment. And from a timeframe perspective, how long will this take, Ed? And we should have asked you while you're up here, I apologize. It's not tomorrow.
I really wish I knew, it's already taken too long. Quite frankly, the COVID thing has had a big impact upon the ability of the FAA to review the master planning process that we're in the middle of right now, and we just got big, we got through a big hump a month or so ago, so we're moving on to the next stage, but I think two years would be lightning fast.
Okay, I have closed the public comment. Are there any council questions while we have Mr. Volk here? Hearing none, we will move this ordinance to the second meeting in August. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Bill. Councilman Frankie, introduction of a resolution.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution red in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
A resolution of the City of LaPorte, Indiana concerning utility receipts tax. Whereas, the City of LaPorte, Indiana has heretofore established and financed a municipal waterworks pursuant to Indiana Code Section eight dash one point five and other applicable laws, and whereas the Indiana General Assembly passed and the Governor-signed House Enrolled Act 1002 dash two zero two-two, also known as HEA 1002, repealing Indiana Code Section six dash two point three dash one dash one, imposing the utility receipts tax and adding Indiana Code Section eight dash one dash two dash four point three, requiring that the city adjust the utilities rate and charges to reflect the repeal of the URT effective July first, 2022. And whereas, the URT is not separately collected by the city as a line item in its utility billing, but the anticipated revenues and payments of the URT are a part of the general rate structure established by the city's past rate studies. And whereas, the URT is a de minimis component of the city's water rates comprising approximately one point five percent of the city's annual water operating budget, and whereas, the city has not conducted a rate study to determine reasonable adjusted rates and charges for services since 2020. And whereas, the cost of operating the city's water utility and performing necessary capital improvements has increased substantially since 2020, and the city is anticipating a rate study and adjustment to its water rates in 2024. And whereas, the city council is of the information and belief that conducting a rate study solely to reflect the impact of the repeal of the URT would not be cost-effective at this time and likely would result in a net increase to the rates and charges for services to customers of the water utility. And whereas, the city cannot comply with the requirements of HEA 1002 insofar as the completion of a rate study, conduct of a properly noticed public hearing, and two readings of an ordinance to adjust the city's water rates could not be completed and effective on or before July first, 2022, as required by HEA 1002. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, number one, the city council agrees that no adjustment to the water rates and charges be made due to the effect of HEA 1002, and number two, in compliance with Indiana Code Section eight dash one dash two dash four point three D, the clerk treasurer shall provide the following notice to all affected customers in each of the next two regular billing cycles as follows. This bill reflects the repeal of the utility receipts tax, Indiana Code Section six dash two point three, before its repeal in HEA 1002 dash 2022. The amount of the adjustment is zero dollars. End of, end of resolution.
Thank you. This is a resolution, so it can be passed this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. This is, just remember, this passed out of the General Assembly in 2022. We will be doing a rate study on water only in 2024, and the cost of a rate study to then raise rates to residents doesn't make sense right now, so this just allows us to hold off until 2024 and leave the URT tax as is.
Makes sense.
Questions from the council?
Bottom line is, it's not an increase, correct?
Correct, and so the one, the part of the resolution you read, Mr. Frankie, where it says that the, that this URT rate is one point five percent of the water operating budget, so when you look at your utility bill, this is only one point five percent of your water portion of your bill, so if you have a twenty-dollar-a-month water bill with the city, that's thirty cents that's on your bill, the cost of doing a special rate study would exceed the savings that all of us would enjoy from this, so that was the recommendation of Ms. Parthune who could be here tonight.
Correct. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Anyone from the public? Any final comment thoughts or comments from the council? We do have a motion and a second, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Councilman Galloway.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution and read it in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
Resolution for City of LaPorte to establish a local income tax public safety fund, Fund Number 2240, be it resolved by the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that indeed now exists for the establishment of a local income tax public safety fund pursuant to Indiana Code Section six dash three, six dash six dash eight. The sources of funding for the newly established fund may include local income tax public safety distributions. The fund shall be used for all purposes as stated in Indiana Code Section six dash three, six dash two dash fourteen, and shall be, shall be subject to the same appropriation process as other funds.
Again, this is a resolution, so it can be passed this evening. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Now that the county council has passed a public safety lit, this just formalizes the process and creates the Fund Number 2240 for public safety.
And if I may, Mayor, the statute that Mr. Galloway read includes like a variety of public safety items, some of which the city doesn't have, but the county may have, like juvenile detention center, but for example, public safety funds for the lit can be used for police and law enforcement, firefighting and fire prevention, county jail, which we do not have, law enforcement training, for example, there's about thirteen different options in there, and I'm sure that our fire chief and police chief have some ideas on how to spend that.
So I do have a motion and a second for the discussion from council. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas, if you could come, please, yes.
So, now, what's the increase going to be? Did they say an increase in taxes?
No, no increase.
No increase? You just stated what, what the funds were going to be.
Well, there'll be a public safety local income tax.
That's already been passed. What's being established tonight, the state requires the city to have a special fund to put those monies into, so.
Now, now, did we get an increase for the firemen and the policemen recently?
Yes, that's what this is.
That's what this is about.
This just formalizes the internal paperwork, so that when the funds begin coming in each month as of January 2023, they have a fund- they have a fund to go into.
And I hear that some of the policemen are leaving because our rates are lower than other cities?
We're leaving. Many months ago, they were leaving. This has established and now we've solidified and our program, both fire and police, are moving forward, doing very well.
Good. I'm all for it, to keep the good people here. They deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Anybody else from the public? Mr. Essling.
Mike Essling again. What percent is the local income tax?
Half of 1%.
Half of 1%. And that's a done deal, the state's.
Correct.
And that's just for the city?
No, that will be county-wide. So the county, there are, I believe, nine entities, local government entities from the county to the City of LaPorte, City of Michigan City, Long Beach, there are others.
They'll slice and dice that half a percent somehow.
Well, it's decided already. So the county, obviously, will receive the most. Michigan City, second, LaPorte, third. And it's based on income, how much is generated from each entity. And then those funds can only be used for public safety.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Hearing none, council comments? All in favors, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution red for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2022 budgets. Whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2022 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2022. General Fund, Engineering 1101-306, from 111 salaries to 312 engineering services, $15,000. Please, 1101-370, from 241 other supplies to 221 operating supplies, $20,000. From 315 professional services to 221 operating supplies, $15,000. Restricted Donation Fund, from 894 NIBC LaPorte Invitational to 2204 Civic Non-Reverting Net Revenue from Tournament, End of resolution.
This as well is a resolution. Do I have a motion to pass?
So moved. Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So basically, according to our clerk treasurer, engineering, because we lost an individual that was focused on trees, we are now going to contract with an arborist to continue the movement forward regarding the trees that you've heard Sue discuss and others. The police, obviously, there should be no surprise that fuel costs have gone dramatically up and we need to transfer some funds, as an example. And then obviously, the restricted donation fund to the NIBC LaPorte Basketball Invitational that was extremely successful for the City of LaPorte. So questions from council? Questions from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Before we adjourn, many of you I saw this weekend and great credit to Mark Schreiber and his team for putting together a fantastic second annual Lake Fest over the weekend. I think everybody enjoyed themselves, yet we did not have any trouble, problems, issues. And we're looking forward to building another round next year even bigger than and better. As well, be careful, be safe. We've had four individuals with COVID happen in the last day here in City Hall. And it's just a reminder that it's not going away. And we need everybody safe to do their job and to keep our community safe. So be cautious and careful. Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you for attending.